Scheduled meeting of town council to order. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? No, I do want to make an announcement that the item under planning, the public hearing, second reading for the rezoning of 58 York Street. So regarding that application for map amendments and rezoning will not be held tonight. If the situation changes, the public hearing will be rescheduled and advertised as necessary. So that will not be tonight. So if anyone was here just for that, I'm sorry to disappoint you, but we'll notify if there's, if that changes. Everyone else has to stay. Hearing that there's... Motion approved the agenda. Do I have a second here? Councilor Thorburn, all those in favor? The agenda has been approved. We are going to move the grants to organization recommendation for art happening because I do see some people here for that. I'm assuming Brian, that's why you're here. So we'll move that up so you don't have to wait to the very end. So we'll do that after we do our presentations. Announcements?
Announcements, yeah. I've got two, actually.
Awesome.
So the first one is the United Ways Bikes for Kids program. It starts on September 23rd, ends on November 5th. And we're asking the community to donate new or gently used bikes. Bring them to the center court of the Bridgewater Mall. These bikes will be repaired by members of the Subaru Reagan cycling team, diesel students at NSCC, as well as students at CAM's Chester area middle school. These bikes we refurbish or give away about 65 bikes a year and about 300 bikes have been given away to date. So it's a great program and we would appreciate the support. The other one is in regards to the Whimsical Children's Store. The Whimsical Children's Store is a unique shopping experience designed with kids in mind, with the help of volunteers, children shop amongst gingerbread houses, miniature Christmas trees, gingerbread kids and gun drops. And what they do is they purchase gifts that will amaze or wow or cause the recipient to howl with laughter. The purpose of the, or what makes the store so unique is that the kids shop for and wrap a present that only they know about. So come Christmas morning, everybody's kind of surprised. But what we do need is we need donations of new or gently used items that a child between the ages of three or 12 would like to buy for a parent or a loved one. If you're interested, and we hope you are, if you can just drop those items off at the Arc on King Street, Monday to Friday between 8:30 and 2:00. So thank you.
Anyone else have any announcements? Councilor Thorburn, did you want to maybe mention the 55-plus games that are happening?
Yeah, they actually start from the 13th to the 16th, which is Wednesday. We'll go pick up our packages and the games start. I think there's probably 25 or so different venues from playing cards to playing pickleball, my favorite sport. Certainly curling's in there, golf is in there, I think tennis, 45 crib, if anybody. But you have to be 55 or older and then it goes up increments of five years. So I'm in the upper echelon. So you're playing against people with your own age groups and we're really excited. It's going to bring thousands of people in town, in Lunenburg County really, because there's things at the Legion, some in Lunenburg, in different areas around Lunenburg County. So it should be a great, great weekend. And it starts Wednesday afternoon.
And 1,000 participants are registered. So that's fantastic. Anyone else with any announcements? No, hearing none. We'll get into our presentation. And for those who haven't been here before, it's always like this, there's always lots of people. It's very exciting. You can stay for the whole hours and hours of our meeting if you like. But how this works is Deputy Mayor Tanner's going to call, he's going to read a little bit about each person and call out your name. You'll come down and whether you like it or not, you have to have a picture with me. And he'll go through that, so just listen for your name. Sounds good. Is Mackenzie Corkum here?
She's just left work. She'll be...
All right, we're close. Bridgewater Curling Team? All right, the Bridgewater Curling Team, Club, sorry, Team Nodding. Yeah, come on up. The Bridgewater Curling Club's Team Nodding, which includes Caitlin Nodding, Skip, Abby Rafuse-Mate, Claire Freeman-Leed, and Emma Naas-Second, are the 2017 Nova Scotia Curling Association's Women's Under 15 Curling Champions. A total of 29 teams took place in the three-day Greenspiel Under 15 Championship hosted by Liverpool and Bridgewater Curling Clubs last February. Their coach is Nick Deagle. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We can start on this one, too? Yes? Just checking. Amy Hartling, is she here? I think I saw her come in. There she is. Amy Hartling competed and won the girls 17 and over 200 free and IM 50 and 100 butterfly, 100 back. Competed and won the girls 15 and over 200 medley and free relay. She was the High Point Female Swimmer of the Meat and named to the Nova Scotia Swimming All-Star Team for the Bridgewater Barracudas. Mariah Kelly? Is Mariah here somewhere? Oh, okay. Mariah Kelly, Hannah's her big sister, completed, competed in one girl 17 and over 50 free and back, 100 breast. Competed in one girl's 15 and over 200 medley and free relay. Named to the Summer Swimming All-Stars Team. Congratulations. Kaylin Risser. Is Kaylin here? No. Peyton Lipsit. Peyton, there's Peyton. Peyton competed and won girls 15 and over 200 medley and free relay. Lindsay Beck. Lindsay here? Lindsay, I'm sorry. Lindsay competed and won girls 15 and over 200 free relay. Congratulations. Alex Farina? Did you see Alex come in? No? All right, thank you. Thomas Owen, I think I saw Thomas. First time I've seen him with his shirt off. Shirt on, I should say. Inside joke. Thomas competed and won the boys 15 and over 200 medley and free relay. Congratulations, Thomas. Jonathan Haas? John, it's not here? No. Andrew Johnson, I saw Andrew here somewhere there. Andrew competed in one boys 15 to 16 50 free, 50 and 100 breast and butterfly. Competed in one boys 15 and over 200 medley and free relay. He is, he is the High Point Male Swimmer of the Meat, named to the Nova Scotia Summer Swimming All-Star Team. Sarah Johnson, his younger sister, competed in one girls 13 to 14 200 medley and free relay, 50 and 100 back, and named to the Summer Swimming All-Star Team. Congratulations. McKenna Lipsit. There's McKenna. McKenna com... Oh, bear with me. McKenna completed in one girls 13 to 14 200 medley and free relay. Congratulations. Jada Roy? Jada there? There she is. Jada completed and won girls 13 to 14 200 medley and free relay. Congratulations. Mia Hartling. Mia completed and won girls 13 to 14 200 medley and free relay. Congratulations. Adam Colbert. My favorite DJ. Adam completed in one boys 13 to 14 200 medley and free relay, set a provincial record in 200 free relay. Congratulations. Travis Smith. Travis, somewhere there you go. Travis competed in one boys 13 to 14 200 medley and free relay, set a provincial record in 200 free relay, competed in one boys 13, 14, 50 and 100 breast, 50 back, 100 free, and he's named to the Summer Swimming All-Star Team. Quinn Conrad. Quinn competed in one boys 13 to 14 200 medley and free relay, 50 butterfly, set a provincial record in 200 free relay, and named to the Summer Swimming All-Star Team. Logan Sangster. None of you are sitting next to your parents. Why is that? Logan Sangster competed in one boys 13 to 14 200 medley and free relay, set a provincial record in 200 free relay, and competed in one boys 13 to 14 50 free. Congratulations. Jonas Talbot. No. Nathan Colbert. There's Nathan. Nathan competed and won boys 11, 12, 200 medley and free relay. Jacob Boiler. No. Rowan Spencer? Where's Rowan? There he is. Rowan competed in one boys 11, 12, 200 medley and free relay. Angelina Butt. There she is. Angelina competed in one girls 10 and under 100 medley relay. Congratulations. Reagan Lipsit. There she is. Competed in one girls 10 and under 100 medley relay and named to the Summer Swimming All-Star Team. And Paige Gladwin. Paige competed in one girls 10 and under 100 medley relay. And now I'll invite the entire club to come down for a quick picture with the mayor. Tall people in the back, small people in the front, shorter people in the front. So the Bridgewater Barracudas Swim Club was the 2017 Nova Scotia Summer Provincial Swimming Provincial Championship High Point Team. And this is the seventh consecutive year that the Barracudas have won the provincial title. Wow, congratulations. Is that everybody? Is that everybody? Mackenzie's here. Perfect. Mackenzie Corkum. There she is. Mackenzie Corkum is a member of the Army Cadet National Rifle Team. This past summer, she represented Canada in Bisley, England at the Imperial Meeting, also known as the annual prize meeting of the National Rifle Association of Great Britain. It is probably the biggest and certainly the most varied competitive shooting festival in the world. She was shooting alongside world champions. Mackenzie is the first local cadet to ever make the National Rifle Team. At this competition, competitors shoot up to and including 1,000 yards using pin sights versus scopes. Mackenzie spent two summers training and competing at the Canot Training Facility to make this team. In 2015, she placed 12th out of 100 shooters. The top 36 were invited to return for Phase Two in 2016 where Mackenzie placed 7th. The top 18, including Mackenzie, became the National Rifle Team. At the Imperial Meeting, Mackenzie received an individual gold medal for top Canadian shot in the Cadet 100 of the Inter-Services Cadet Rifle Meeting and a silver in a team match. She also received a bronze for her participation in the Imperial Meeting. Congratulations, Mackenzie. Is that everything? I don't think she's here, if that helps. Who is it? Let's forget. She's not here. I'm leaving. I'm leaving, Duncan. Your partner here is just going to have to... There's so much talent down there. How much we don't... If you'd come here with your speed, you'd have known anyone in the room. You'd have even scared the TV. What? Oh, yes. Even the cameraman out there. Okay, as we move on, if there's any, if there's any delegations that wish to address council? Anybody? No? Brian, did you?
We have the chief. Are you need the two minutes?
Yeah, yeah. Did you want to, did you want to come down and do that now then? Yep, so you have, just, we know who you are, but just tell us who you are and what you're here for. And yeah, you have two minutes.
Okay. Clock's ticking. Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and council. So I'm Brian Briganza, on behalf of Art Happening Bridgewater Society. I just wanted to say a few brief words about this, the statement that was put forward to council from the Grants to Organizations Committee. And we are, of course, grateful for the work of this committee and the work of town council. So there's a couple of things in the statement I just wanted to clarify. There was a, the statement that our business model, and in quotation, seems focused on creating income opportunities for artists. I'd like to clarify that this is our value. It's not necessarily our business model. Our mission and our work is to focus on providing high-quality, accessible arts and cultural programming opportunities where people of all ages and backgrounds can exchange ideas, skills and talents. And we want to provide that in an inclusive environment so that those that participate can learn, grow and share their talents and therefore contribute to a vibrant downtown Bridgewater. So the value that we endeavor to do is to find a way that artists are recognized and a way that doesn't take advantage of artists and raises the profile of arts and counsel, arts and culture as an economic driver in the community. As the only arts organization in Bridgewater, we hear from artists that they are too often asked to provide a free service. They're asked to volunteer their time or to give donations to fundraisers. They are consistently undervalued. And yet they are a core economic, they can be a core economic driver for a community if it's willing to see this potential. And I know you understand this because in the same way that the town of Bridgewater paid its musicians this summer at Bijanewiska Park, and I was one of those artists that played there and was really, really pleased to play to almost 90 people, your model wasn't necessarily to provide income to artists. It was to provide a summer music series that would bring people downtown to use the new park. And specifically, you valued musicians and their contributions to drawing people to King Street. So in the same way, we want to provide high-quality programming that draws people to the downtown core and we value the contribution of artists to the community. So I just wanted to make that clarification because it talks about our business model and just wanted to clarify that. There were a few conditions in the recommendations and I wanted to just say that we can easily accommodate those conditions because we're already doing those things. So one condition was that Art Happening provide no-cost programming to members of the community and community organizations. So ways that we've already been doing that is through the placemaking program, which was in partnership with the town, and that was free to any participants, any community members. This summer, we provided free program to over 30 children connected to the Town of Bridgewater Recreation. And the Artpreneur program that we ran this summer was a free program to youth and young adult participants, and it created a part-time job in the community. So those are a few examples of how we're already doing what you're asked as conditions. A second condition was as part of the regular onsite programming that we have a free drop in creative time. So we're already doing this and in July and August of this year, we had over 150 hours of open studio time in which was free to citizens to access art supplies and to use the space. And when our director, Donna, is in the open, has her open hours, that space is open, free to the community and to the public. So again, we're already doing condition two. Condition three was about five hours of free access a week for town programming. As last year, we'll continue to offer that to the town recreation department, the community garden and others up to the free, five hours free access, and we'll usually go above that. And then a recognition of town of Bridgewater support to, on our Art Happening promotion materials, and absolutely, we're happy to do that. So I just wanted to address those, those four conditions. And then finally, I'd just like to say that, so we submitted our request to council in February of this year, trying to get in for your budget deliberations. We didn't hear back from the committee, the funding committee until the end of May. And at that time, when we met, it was early June, and we were asked to put in an application in two days, which we did. It is now September and our request from February is only now on the agenda of council. Thank you very much.
Is there any other delegations? No, hearing none. Someone prepared to make a motion and we can have a discussion for Art Happening?
I'll make a motion, your worship. And I may change it a bit from what's here. The town council of town of Bridgewater approved an operating grant to Art Happening for 2017, 2018 fiscal year to a maximum, sorry, to a value of $15,000 with the following conditions. When possible, Art Happening is to provide no-cost programming to members of the community and community organizations. As part of the regular onsite programming, a free, no-donation-expected drop in creative time, open to all with free access to art supplies, free access to space for town programming, maximum five hours per week, and finally, recognition of the town's support on Art Happening print and digital material.
Have a second here, please. Councilor Frazier, discussion?
Yes, your worship. I, the motion indicated that was to a maximum value. I said, just said $15,000. And with those conditions, I'm happy to support that. This is the second year that we will be supporting the Art Happening group. And the first year, it did not go to grants to organizations. It went directly to council, if I remember correctly. And there was not probably any due diligence done whatsoever at that point in time. We thought it was a great idea and I still think it's a great organization and I think it serves a good purpose in town. And the only question was over the, over the timeframe, the application came in and when we're finally approving it, there was some, some concern about what was being given for free. That's been clarified, obviously. And the other issue was, and I'm not going to get into details onto it, but the financial statements were confused, a little bit confusing to us. And they're now been straightened out and it looks like it's going to hopefully work out for everyone's benefit.
Any other discussion on that? Councilor Graves?
Just want to say that I appreciate the value that Art Happening provides, the town of Bridgewater and the people that visit and citizens. I've attended a number of their events and it's a good time and I think they bring people to the community and I think that they're, they're an asset, a terrific asset. So I thank you for your work.
I'll just add that I think we all are on the same page that there's tremendous value with Art Happening. Whether we like it or not, with, with the municipal government act and how we operate, we have a square, a square hole. We have to get a round peg somehow into that. It just, it can't. We have to, we have to make it a square peg into a square hole. And sometimes it does take time. We don't have the flexibility that some other organizations might have. We have to adhere to certain rules and as Councilor McGinnis said, last year it went, it went right to council and it just, it didn't have to meet any kind of criteria. And this year, it was a grant to an organization, which is what it is. And so we had to make sure that it meets that criteria. So we haven't voted, but I'm happily to support the motion because I do believe that there's great tremendous value with Art Happening. And, you know, we apologize that it took so long, that we had to make sure that it could happen. So I will be supporting the motion. Anybody else have any further comments to add? Hearing none, ready for the question? Question being called. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, going back up, we have the minutes from August 14th, 2017, regular council meeting. Someone prepared to make a motion?
I move the town council of town of Bridgewater approve and confirm the minutes of the August 14th, 2017, regular town council meeting as circulated.
Second here, Councilor McDonald. Any discussion, errors, omissions? No, hearing none. All those in favor? Carried. As noted, 58 York Street is not being dealt with today. And as noted before, if the situation changes, the public hearing will be rescheduled and advertised as necessary. That's all the information I have about that. Next item, planning preliminary report, 673 King Street, Ferkenstein Brewery, Brewing Incorporated, application for development agreement.
Yes, thank you, your worship. So in place of Jamie Allen, today, we received an application from Ferkenstein Brewing, Ferkenstein, I'm not sure which way it's supposed to be said. They need a development agreement in order to have beverage room license. So it's at 673 King Street. So I think most people here know where they are, in the same building as Trade Winds on the ground floor there. They, current use is a microbrewery and they are requesting to add beverage room and lounge use, which is what they require. They require municipal approval for that in order to get that type of license. So mixed-use downtown neighborhood with commercial office residential uses. And there's other existing restaurants and beverage rooms, beverage room and lounge uses along King Street. It is zoned historic downtown commercial. The only way we can permit this use is through a development agreement. There's no additional changes being proposed to the property or the uses within the existing structure. And so it's very straightforward, very similar to the development agreement two years ago for Lanatai to enable their beverage room and lounge license. So it's a very simple development agreement moving forward through. So this is just the preliminary report, letting you know we received this application. We are having a public participation meeting this Wednesday at 6:00 here in council chambers and town hall. The advertising has already been complete for that. Following that, there'll be a planning and analysis report to council with the draft development agreement for first consideration at the next, the most, the next council meeting we can get to. And then, of course, there'll be a public hearing and final consideration of the development agreement. And there's an appeal period and registration. That's the application.
From start to finish, how long until they can, well, I guess that's until they can apply for the new liquor licenses, right?
It all depends on how many people come out on Wednesday night and what we hear. So we've already been, been doing a lot of the analysis. It's a fairly straightforward development agreement. The zone permissions of the zone are supportive of this type of use. It's just the, we need a development agreement to enable the beverage room and lounge.
So all...
Because that provides the notification to neighbors within the 30-meter radius. So everybody is aware that there's a, an application for this use because they will now be able to serve more than sample size. So with their microbrewery, their current use, their, and the current license that they have from the province, they're only able to sell sample size and not a full beer.
So start to finish, if all goes smoothly, the end of the appeal period...
If all goes smoothly by Halloween.
By Halloween and then...
Or thereabouts.
Then the liquor license process, right?
I hesitate to, yeah, I hesitate to say exactly how long it would take us, but we would hope that if all goes well on Wednesday, we'll bring it back to the next council meeting for first reading. It's about a month till you can then do second reading. And there's a 14-day appeal period. So you're looking at, you know, mid-fall by the time our process is complete so they can get their letter to then go to the province for the liquor licensing process, which I'm not sure how long that takes, but Councilor Tanner may have an idea.
But they, and they could have applied for this right after they opened or prior to opening?
Yeah, we have been in communication with them for, before they opened even, around what the process is. It just took them a while to make their application.
Okay. Any other questions of Mrs. McDonald? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater refer the application for, for development agreement for 673 King Street to staff to follow the development agreement application process required by Municipal Planning Strategy Policy IM-7 and the Municipal Government Act.
Second here, Councilor Graves. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? [inaudible] Is that everything? I don't think she's here, if that helps. Who is it? It's just, yeah, she's not here. She's working.
I'm leaving, Duncan. Your partner here is just going to have to have to...
So much talent down there.
Don't be everyone's... If you'd come here with your speed, you'd have known anyone in the room. You'd have even scared the TV.
What? Oh, yes.
Even the camera out there.
Okay, as we move on, if there's any, if there's any delegations that wish to address council? Anybody? No? Brian, did you?
We have the chief. Are you need the two minutes?
Yeah, yeah. Did you want to, did you want to come down and do that now then? Yep, so you have, just, we know who you are, but just tell us who you are and what you're here for. And yeah, you have two minutes.
Okay. Clock's ticking. Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and council. So I'm Brian Briganza, on behalf of Art Happening Bridgewater Society. I just wanted to say a few brief words about this, the statement that was put forward to council from the Grants to Organizations Committee. And we are, of course, grateful for the work of this committee and the work of town council. So there's a couple of things in the statement I just wanted to clarify. There was a, the statement that our business model, and in quotation, seems focused on creating income opportunities for artists. I'd like to clarify that this is our value. It's not necessarily our business model. Our mission and our work is to focus on providing high-quality, accessible arts and cultural programming opportunities where people of all ages and backgrounds can exchange ideas, skills and talents. And we want to provide that in an inclusive environment so that those that participate can learn, grow and share their talents and therefore contribute to a vibrant downtown Bridgewater. So the value that we endeavor to do is to find a way that artists are recognized and a way that doesn't take advantage of artists and raises the profile of arts and counsel, arts and culture as an economic driver in the community. As the only arts organization in Bridgewater, we hear from artists that they are too often asked to provide a free service. They're asked to volunteer their time or to give donations to fundraisers. They are consistently undervalued. And yet they are a core economic, they can be a core economic driver for a community if it's willing to see this potential. And I know you understand this because in the same way that the town of Bridgewater paid its musicians this summer at Bijanewiska Park, and I was one of those artists that played there and was really, really pleased to play to almost 90 people, your model wasn't necessarily to provide income to artists. It was to provide a summer music series that would bring people downtown to use the new park. And specifically, you valued musicians and their contributions to drawing people to King Street. So in the same way, we want to provide high-quality programming that draws people to the downtown core and we value the contribution of artists to the community. So I just wanted to make that clarification because it talks about our business model so everybody is aware that there's a, an application for this use, because they will now be able to serve more than sample size. So with their microbrewery, their current use, their, and the current license that they have from the province, they're only able to sell sample size and not a full beer.
So start to finish, if all goes smoothly, the end of the appeal period-
If all goes smoothly by Halloween.
By Halloween, and then-
Or thereabouts.
Then the liquor license process, right?
I hesitate to, yeah, I hesitate to say exactly how long it would take us, but we would hope that if all goes well on Wednesday, we'll bring it back to the next council meeting for first reading. It's about a month till you can then do second reading, and there's a 14-day appeal period. So you're looking at, you know, mid-fall by the time our process is complete, so they can get their letter to then go to the province for the liquor licensing process, which I'm not sure how long that takes, but Counselor Tanner may have an idea.
But they, and they could have applied for this right after they opened, or prior to opening?
Yeah, we have been in communication with them for, before they opened even, around what the process is. It just took them a while to make their application.
Okay. Any other questions of Ms. McDonald? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the application for, for development agreement for 673 King Street to staff to follow the development agreement application process required by municipal planning strategy policy IM-7 and the municipal government act.
Secondary, Counselor Graves, any further discussion?
None.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Item 7.3, transit pilot, progress to launch of system. Exciting times.
Yes, so I am now on behalf of Mackenzie Childs, who spent today providing presentations to four or five of the seniors' homes within town, and tomorrow has more. We just wanted to provide you with a quick overview of where we're at, because things are moving pretty fast. So the six-month pilot is still on track to start September 25th. So September 25th to October 1st is training for everyone. Rides are free, the hours of operation are going to be reduced, so it'll be probably the Sunday or Saturday schedule versus the Monday to Friday schedule. And that's because the best way to train our bus drivers is they have to be driving the bus on the route with passengers. So we're working in partnership with King's Transit, they will be here on site, will launch on the 25th, but it will be reduced hours for that first week as we train the drivers up, and then we can start rolling. So, regular hours of operation, starting on October 1st, will be Monday to Friday, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Saturday, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We'll run the first two weeks after the training week free as well, but after October 15th, the regular fare is $2. Here is the map of the route, and we've just been working to finalize this. So just to quickly explain what you see, the bus stops are all numbered, and it starts here at the LCLC. The difference between the circular dots and the green squares are, that the green squares are the stops that you will see on the schedule. Not every single stop, there's 24 stops along the route, fixed stops rather, and not all 24 will have a time slot on the schedule, I'll show you that in a moment. So the ones in green are the ones that show up on the schedule, so you can estimate what time the bus will then be passing by the stops on the in-between. It's how Halifax Transit and many other transit systems have their, King's Transit and things have their schedules set up, and we'll be able to tweak that. We really hesitated to have every stop scheduled out. This is the pilot, there's going to be tweaks and things to the schedule as we go, and we wanted to provide the most accurate information, but not to a fault. So, we're going with this, this system. The dashed marks are the areas where you are not allowed to flag the bus down. So those are the no flag, that's why it says no flagging up at the top. The solid line indicates the parts of the route where you could, in between the fixed stops, stand on the side and flag the bus down. And so that allows us, that's primarily the residential areas, the local streets, it's the arterial streets that really have the no, no flagging happening. So, as I said, only some of the stops will be posted in the schedule, so the stops in the schedule are eight to 12 minutes apart. So it starts at LCLC, the Bridgewater Mall, Glen Allen near the hospital, La Havre, Jubilee near Des Berzay, Gateway Plaza. And it's proposed you arrive a few minutes early to your stop or the location along the route that you're trying to catch the bus. Again, around the flag stop system, so this is a little bit of a less cluttered version, so you can see very clearly the solid lines is where you could flag the bus down, the hash lines, or the dash lines rather, indicate where you cannot, and you have to use the fixed stop. Single rides, $2, $1.50 for youth and students. We will also be having 10-ride passes and 30-ride passes, as we've talked to council before, we're not doing a monthly pass at this point in time, because of the large administrative cost to doing that. But also, as we figure out that the timeframe that that puts on someone to use that pass only between the first of the month and the 30th or 31st of the month, whereas if you have a 30-ride pass, that is valid for the whole duration of the time. And so it allows people, as we all start to get used to having a bus in town, then we'll work towards having monthly passes available. But when we start up, we've just, a lot of feedback, a lot of best practice, it's not the most ideal, so we're starting that way. So you either put the cash fare in at the cash box on the bus, or the driver will punch your ride card. We are also, yeah, okay, we are also partnering with various retail outlets to be able to sell those passes. You can also buy them here at town hall, so we're still in the final stages of getting all of that set up. And the website has been launched, so all of this information is now available on the town's website, bridgewater.ca/transit. So the route, we're developing a ride guide that's in the final stages, that tells you a lot of the how-to, how to get on the bus, how to, you know, can you use it with your bike, with your stroller, wheelchair, et cetera, so how to do it. So there's a lot of information now available on the website. We're also making sure on any printed material to say, this is a pilot, things are subject to change, please check the website for the most up-to-date information, so that if, you know, we do print a bunch of brochures, and in three months' time, we change something, and somebody goes to an old one, it will say, you know, if it's not what you see here, check the website, that will be the most accurate information. We're going to have an open bus, instead of an open house, but an open bus launch. So Sunday, September 24th, before the training week starts, at the Bridgewater Mall, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, we'll have the bus there, so people can get on and off, check it all out, see how it works. We will have, hopefully, many of you from town council, as well as people, I believe some invitations have been extended to other levels of government, to Halifax Regional Municipality, because they so graciously donated the bus. We're hopefully going to find someone who can make us a bus cake, like the one in the picture there, because there must be cake, as well as some other things we're learning. Exactly. And so, we're really quite excited, just a, just a short little open bus to sort of try and celebrate with the community and, and generate a lot of interest before we get down to business and get the, the drivers trained and on the road and the bus en route, which is very exciting. And that's it. So, Mackenzie has been fielding many of the questions, and we just hope everyone can join us on the bus.
Questions from council? Deputy Mayor?
Jessica Preus, we talked about, you know, what we're going to use to measure the success of this and so on. Do you have more details on that yet?
I do, I talked to Greg Sewell with Department of Municipal Affairs, who's the main program coordinator for all the community transit programs. And he said the Town of Yarmouth is really going to be our benchmark, because there's very few services have started up, like the one that we're trying to start up, and Yarmouth is the most recent. And they were averaging 1,000 riders a month. So he said, that's our benchmark, we need to try to go more than that. So I'm, I'm, we had talked with Yarmouth a couple months ago, and I'm going to follow back up with them to see if we can get their, their full numbers on a monthly breakdown, so we really have something to compare to. But he was saying, I think they had 13,000 riders in their first year of operation. And I believe our feasibility study suggested that we could try and get 16,000 in our first, that's what we're shooting for. So, that's where we're at.
Others with questions?
Just further to answer his question, would you be getting that broken down by age groups, we know who's using the bus? Would that be possible, maybe?
You're asking for some pretty detailed information there, wait, but-
No, I'm just trying to clarify who's using the bus.
No, yeah, and I think, I think we'll be doing a lot of debriefing with the bus drivers, who are going to have a pretty good sense. We also are looking at, we've been given one from Kings, we're looking to get a second one for the second bus, that are these very low-tech clicker counters, and that you can count who's putting cash in, who's using a punch card or a special pass. We're still trying to connect and work out some, some things with, with, you know, like community services. So instead of a taxi chip, maybe they'll give bus tickets or something like that, so we're still trying to reach out to them to find out, and maybe that would be something that we would, you know, we would track, how many of those we might sell. And then there would be ways, perhaps we could track sort of either demographics, we'll know if it's a youth fair versus an adult and senior fair. So if there's certain targeted demographics we want to try and, and measure, or, or users, then let us know, and we'll see what we can do. But I don't know, because we're just doing cash and not, you know, like how Yarmouth started off with the smart card fare technology, which perhaps was able to capture more demographic information. That's the other thing, we're in the process of working with Hotspots, so we can have bus tickets on smartphones, so we're also working on that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fager?
Yes, thanks for the update. I know initially, we had talked about Lumberjacks, and we had their schedule, is there any more?
Yep, we are, those, we don't have them in the regular schedule, there's 23 home games. We have the Lumberjacks schedule, and so we'll be looking to schedule extended hours on Lumberjacks game nights. It'll add about two additional hours to the schedule for those game nights.
Okay, so you're planning to start that?
Yep, we're planning, but we're, as soon as, so we, we're mapping out the schedule right now, and then we'll map in when those Lumberjacks games are. So no, Mackenzie's been in touch with Lumberjacks and the LCLC.
Have we reached out to the Lumberjacks to try to form some kind of partnership? Because I think it would be pretty exciting if, you know, if you ride the bus, but your ticket gives you a dollar off the game or something like that, it might boost ridership-
Yeah, you know, I don't know that we've explored that yet. We have explored other things with the LCLC around, you know, you have an expired 10-punch card, and you get a free pass for the day into the LCLC, things like that. So we are looking at some of those partnerships, but I don't believe we've, we've reached out to Lumberjack specifically, so I'll check with Mackenzie, and we'll make sure that we do if we haven't already.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I understand a benchmark is, it's a good, a good place to start, is comparing to Yarmouth, but obviously, that doesn't measure success if we beat Yarmouth. But, so will there be, is there plans for kind of like a debrief with some of the stakeholders that came out in the first place, who expressed, you know, how transit would help them or their clients or customers or so on, to see, did it help? That we know that there is success, that it is reaching a goal?
Yeah, so I think I had, I had mentioned before, we have developed a partnership with Dalhousie University, and we are sort of in the latter stages of trying to launch a bit of a pre-transit survey, and then we're planning in January, a fairly detailed mid-pilot survey and evaluation. So we've been working with them to develop some indicators and things like that, and we would definitely be reaching back out to all of those who participated in the feasibility study and all the workshops that we did last year, so that's on our radar.
Counselor Graves?
So Jessica, in regards to some of the more sought-after stops, so Bridgewater Mall, the plaza, Bridgewater Plaza, the LCLC and the hospital, does the bus actually go right into the plaza and the mall? Does it stop in the hospital, and does it do the roundabout of the LCLC?
Yes, so Larry, help me out if I mess this up. It will go into the Gateway Plaza, and that's number, stop number 20 right there, it'll stop somewhere around the pharmacy, and then pull back out. It goes right, the LCLC is the start and stop for the service, because Mackenzie did a lot of work, looking at, you know, picking up people and getting them to the major places of work, to see what would, what works best to get the most number of people to where they need to go, and that, that worked quite well. We'll, we'll of course be evaluating that and monitoring that, seeing if that needs to tweak, but it also allows that at the end of every loop, the driver has a place where they can run in to use the washroom or grab a coffee or, or a snack or something like that, because LCLC has those services all day, which is great. It does go into the Bridgewater Mall, so again, I guess what I didn't go through was the, the direction. So it is a figure eight, it is going like this, so then it goes up Glen Allen around by the hospital, down, and then goes around. And so it does go into, because it comes over the new bridge, it turns right onto La Havre, it will go down into the mall and stop, I believe that's around the shopper, the main entrance by shoppers, which is where we've been directed to have as the stop by the mall. It does not go directly into the hospital, that was too difficult to configure, but it will stop, Larry, it stops pretty much right at the driveway to the hospital, so short walk up. What were some of your other key destinations? Stops in front of the Des Berzay Museum. It has some great connections with the Centennial Trail, and I know that's one thing in the ride guide that Mackenzie's drawing attention to, that you can take the bus and then go for a walk on the trail and come back and hop back on the bus and go back home, so helping people access things in different parts of town that perhaps they haven't been able to access before.
Okay, good. Counselor Fager?
I know there was mention at previous council meeting about having discussion with taxi owners and seeing if there was potential for a partnership there at some point, or we-
So that's, that's still going to happen, it's just carving out the time to have a discussion and alleviate some fears and think about some out-of-the-box partnerships with them, yeah.
Okay, great.
I have Yarmouth 2016 numbers, if I haven't sent that to you, I can, not broken down by age, but I can tell you when they launched, they had 724 riders in the first month, and then they went right up to 1,000, and in their summer months were their busiest months, with almost 1,300 riders for July, June, July, and August. And Christmas was very busy for them. I'll send you those. That's 2016, so I'm sure they have updated numbers.
Yeah, I have some of those, I just don't have the full suite of what, what they have to date.
That's pretty exciting. We can do it. Any other, any other questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you. No correspondence for information, correspondence for action, no. Office of the Information and Privacy Commissioner, right to know week, there's a proclamation there, someone wish to make that proclamation? Counselor Thurbin, I know you love making proclamations.
I would move that whereas the Town of Bridgewater has adopted principles of openness, transparency, and accountability, and whereas Part 20 of the municipal government act gives citizens a right to access to information in the custody or under the control of the Town of Bridgewater, and whereas access to information ensures citizens of Nova Scotia have the opportunity for meaningful participation in the democratic process, and whereas a celebration of the right of citizens to access to information will facilitate informed public participation in policy formalization, ensure fairness in government decision-making, and permit the airing of reconciliation of divergent views. And whereas the Town of Bridgewater joins other Canadian jurisdictions and democracies worldwide and acknowledge an international right to know week, therefore, be it resolved that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater thus hereby proclaim September 25th to October 1st, 2017, the right to know week in the Town of Bridgewater.
Thank you, a secondary, Counselor McDonald. Everyone ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Our next item is a letter from W. N. L. Richards, event at exhibition grounds, this is so short motion, and a letter basically with concerns due to the fumes of the, I guess it's the burnout competition. I haven't been around the table for four years, but we used to receive letters most years from, from residents, and I'm assuming that has been true most years, so it is an ongoing concern of residents with that event. There is a motion to refer that staff, someone's prepared to make that motion, and we can have a discussion, Counselor Graves?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the letter from W. N. L. Richards to staff report.
Secondary, Counselor Fager, any discussion on that? Counselor McGinnis?
What are we asking the staff to report?
That's, that's a very good question. Would you like to give some direction, or do you-
Well, they should have some direction, I would think.
Yeah, I, I think it's more a case of, there's several parts to that letter, you know, zoning, noise, to, they respond back to council, give you some background on each of those items, and then from there, council can decide whether or not they want to deal with through the noise bylaw or whatever. But just add some substance and background information for council's information.
The request in the letter is to basically look at whether it's time to not hold, not allow the event in town, is what they're asking for. Counselor McDonald?
The exhibition grounds is private property, so we don't have the authority to tell them what they can and cannot host on those grounds unless it breaks a bylaw, that's correct, isn't it? So the only thing we can do is ask for a staff report on if they're breaking any bylaws. Okay, all right, just wanted to be clear on that.
Or I guess the other piece of that puzzle would be, if, if it was the will of council to really not have that event, we could approach the committee and ask if there was another event they could have, or at least have a discussion, I guess. Counselor Thurbin?
I think through reading that letter, there was some concern about the late fireworks at 11:00 that had them as well, and maybe have them earlier or not have them at all or something could be discussed with them, but certainly, I guess the citizens didn't know that they were, that was happening, and then all of a sudden, bang, 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 and makes a lot of noise.
Yeah, there's, there's certainly a communications component with the community that I think needs to be improved, but I think that it's in the best interests of the event as well to improve that communication, because I know I received a number of calls from people and emails about the fireworks. And the question was, did, did the town know the fireworks were going to start at 11:00? And I don't know if we knew they were going to start at 11:00, I'm looking at Mr. Feener, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't go through you, I don't think.
There'd be a vote, I think, with the fireworks through our fire inspector, and I'm not sure we are aware of the town.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
So rather than have staff do a report, I'm not going to call it a waste of time, but I think I just called it-
I'm not sure we are aware of the town.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
So rather than have staff do a report, I'm not going to call it a waste of time, but I think I just called it a waste of time. Why don't we just have a meeting with the committee that organizes this? Because we do have a noise bylaw, it's in effect, and it covers between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. that there's no excessive noise beyond 90 decibels. So why don't we just meet with this organization, express some of the concerns represented in this letter, and talk to them about it, you know, talk about having fireworks earlier in the evening, and talk about the concerns we have of burning rubber and so on. I don't understand what a staff report's going to give us. We all know what the issue is.
Is the noise bylaw not exempt for special events?
I don't know, I didn't get that deep into it, honestly.
Yeah, so we get, but a conversation may be all we need to help kind of bridge that gap.
Well, I think that's probably something that is overdue anyway. Like I said, around the table, I think there's been issues raised throughout the community every year, but I don't think anyone's ever formally, and this goes back to, to year one. I don't think anyone's formally sat down and just said, let them know. You know, every year we kind of get an issue here or an issue there. The burnout competition, year after year, is, is an issue. We have people that can't even stay in their homes because of the, the smell, and that's not right either. So maybe that is the direction we should head first. It's just we could have a meeting, if it's a couple of us on, members of council and a, a staff person with the chair and vice chair of the committee.
Sure.
Would we, is that a better use of time first? And then from there, perhaps refer that information to staff or... Whatever it is that we need, if it's, if it's changing the noise bylaw or...
Yeah, I mean, I think you get much further with a face-to-face meeting first, expressing our concerns and the concerns of residents, and then figure it out from there. I mean, people, most people are reasonable.
And I think it's fair to that group if we just sit down and have a face-to-face and have a talk with them. And explain that what our concerns, what the residents' concerns are. Because, you know, like it or not, we have developed a reputation as a sustainable town. One that, you know, has a fairly, you know, you can breathe the air and you can maybe go at night and not lock your door and things like that. So anyway, I, I just think that's, we should, should have face-to-face.
Okay. Why don't I can facilitate that with someone on council if they wish to join me? And then maybe we'll bring in someone from staff and report back? Oh, I knew I should have had the discussion first. All right. So is it just easy?
Just vote it down.
Yeah, all right. Everyone heard that? All those in favor? Those opposed? Look at that. Could not see that coming. Okay, so, does anyone in particular want to join me for that meeting?
I'll be happy, or?
You guys can fight it out. Right here, next Monday. All right, one of you can join me. Reports of recommendation, smoking in the workplace policy amendment. Ashley's here to discuss, are you here to discuss this topic? All right. Everyone's read the policy amendments. Does someone want to make a motion and then, if they have any questions? Would you like your questions answered before you make a motion, in case there's some changes?
Let's do that.
Okay, you have questions?
So I guess one question I have would be the third-party contractors. So if you're a plumber or you're an electrician working, doing work on behalf of the town, in the town, would they be, would, would that, would the rules fall to them as well? And it's not mentioned in the policy?
No, this policy is specific to staff, personnel policy.
So should third-party contractors be included? So someone who's painting on behalf of, painting a town building, doing plumbing for the town? Any of the other trades are?
Likely fall to the bylaw that's in place for smoking on town property.
Okay.
I think it's a fair point, though. If you're, if you're working, representing the town, then our third-party contractors, should they not be following town policies if they are in fact representing the town?
We can explore that further if council has a wish to determine whether or not that should.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Any contracts I've seen on a personal basis all include that kind of component as a clause. You must follow the policies established by the organization that's hiring you. So Larry, do, I don't know, we have that placed currently, or?
Yeah, I mean, I know we've, I know we've been successful in having contractors follow the smoking, you know, the smoking bylaws in the past, so I'm not sure if it's a specific concern or, or if just generally, you know, an observation. But I, I'm trying to think of when I've noticed it, and I can't say that I really recall that.
Well, everything was, was directed towards staff, so, so, but staff doesn't do everything in, in the Town of Bridgewater. So the, so the question was, does it extend to third parties? And if nobody, if you don't have a problem with it, and it's not an issue, I'm not trying to make it an issue, it was just something I noticed that was missing. I thought it was missing.
No, I think it's a, I think it's a valid concern if we're having an event and we're hiring, I think if Canada Day, for example, if we're hiring someone to do the sound for a certain event or Remembrance Day or something, if, if we are the employer of the day, they're representing us at our event, they probably should adhere to town policy.
Could be road signage, you know, it could be, I don't know, sort of, about safety and...
I, I think you're going to find the bylaw probably covers that. It is the Smoke Free Act, and there's also the Town Properties Act. I know employees specifically, and I think it's covered, you know, aren't to be smoking on town properties. So as I mentioned, I know we've had those conversations with contractors in the past, and I think the amount of smoking that happened, you know, 20 years ago compared to now, I think is certainly a lot less. And I, I just can't recall seeing a contractor smoking on a job site. But we can certainly look at the bylaw and the act and see if it's not covered. Perhaps we can bring it back to council.
You happy with that? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yes, so just to clarify, where I see it is in the contract itself. So if you're successful in getting this tender, if you're successful in getting this RFP, you are to abide by these rules. And so that's where I see it come up. I don't know if it's in our current documentation that goes out to these folks.
I can't say for certain.
Easy clause to add, I guess, is what I'm saying.
The one instance, or the one situation that we used to have issues with, it may be in that particular one.
Okay.
But it's not a common clause in our contract.
We'll keep an eye on it. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Fager?
Yes, Your Worship, that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved their revised smoking in the workplace policy as presented in Document 17-122 and adopted as, as Policy 10.7 under Discipline and Conduct in the Town's Personnel Policies and Procedure, Procedures Manual.
Secondar. Counsel McDonald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Report on scent-reduced workplace policy. So kind of the same idea. Just quite a few sensitivities. Well, we see this everywhere we go now in buildings, reduced due to sensitivities of scent. So does anyone have any questions on that? Someone prepared to make a motion?
We've moved the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the scent-reduced workplace policy as presented in Document 17-127 and adopted as Policy 10.8 under Discipline and Conduct in the Town's Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual.
Secondar. Counsel Fager, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Quiet group today. Tender 17-09E, new wheel loader, 2017 or newer. Any questions on that before we dive into this? No?
None.
Wow, it's really easy.
We put it in the budget.
In the budget?
Yeah, it's in the budget, it came under budget.
Yeah, 55K.
All right, someone prepared, someone prepared to make a motion?
Really want to give Larry a hard time?
I'll bring it forward.
Counsel Thurman.
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award tender 17-09E, supply of a new wheel loader for the purchase of a new 2017 cat wheel loader, including provisional items, automatic grease and system, Michelin X snow tires plus winter tires with multiple rims, payload scale, rear view camera, and 16-month premium extended warranty to Atlantic Tractor and Equipment Limited for a total price of $334,968, including HST and $303,760.63 net HST.
Secondar, Counsel McGuinness, any discussion?
Just one, is that a real word? The word before multi-whatever-it-is rims? Is that a typo or is that a real word? Multi-piece?
Multi-piece rims?
Yeah.
Multi-piece.
Piece.
Multi-piece.
Oh, it's, it's a spelling error. It should be multi-piece.
I see an L there, and that's the reason why I asked it. Thank you.
Oh, and must have been a resolution.
No, it's just, it's a new thing, it's only in Bridgewater.
Yeah, question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Fancy. Motion's carried. Building inspection report for June and July is attached, and, I mean, I like those building estimates year-to-date. My eye is just drawn to that one. I don't know why. Any questions on that? On those?
No, the only comment is, we should not take this for granted. That's significant growth for our town. I think, I haven't got it pulled up on my screen, but I think it's around nine-plus million year-to-date. And that's significant development in our town. A lot of towns would really love to have that.
Well, and as the interest rate atmosphere changes and goes up, we need to be proactive and continue to make our town development friendly. We've seen what can happen in other communities when developments stall. I mean, we've always been good with reduction of red tape, so I think we're on it. And I'm sure our staff would tell us if there are barriers that developers are finding that we need to address. Are we going to hear one now?
No, I just had a quick question.
Yep.
So if they, if I'm a developer and I'm just clearing land, I don't need a building permit, so to speak, for that, right? So that would not be in these numbers? Correct?
Typically, yes.
Typically, okay. No, it just seems like there's a little bit more on the horizon still, and...
Perhaps, yeah, this is just June and July.
Yeah, well...
So any August?
I'm thinking even further on the horizon.
So things where land has potentially been cleared, but no permit has been applied?
No, typically the permit's issued when they're ready for foundation.
True, yeah, okay.
Clear and broken.
But is that where the estimates fall?
It's building construction, yeah.
So the land is cleared, that's why the, the top charts look a little low, but that bottom, that year-end estimates, is that why that is so much higher in the charting? Because it's the anticipation of these builds that...
I don't know if that would.
No? So it's not even included in that?
Not the anticipation, no. These are actually permits that have been paid for.
Yeah.
Okay, so then it's even, yeah, it's even better. But, no, you're, you're right, we should not be resting on our laurels because we all know the stats on how many people can't pay for their own mortgage if interest rates go up half a point, so.
Scary.
Yeah. And so that's there for your information. You have any questions, you know where to find Mr. Feener. Recommendation of the Director of Finance, donations to South Shore Fieldhouse Society. And just again, for the general public's knowledge and clarification, we are not giving a grant to the fieldhouse. People come in and make donations. We are the, the bank for those, so it's an in and an out. This is not taxpayer money being given out to the fieldhouse. These are people that have come in and made the donation. So is someone prepared to make that motion?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve a grant in the amount of $10,500 to the South Shore Fieldhouse Society for the multi-per, multi-use facility on Glen Allen Drive.
Is there a secondar?
Secondar.
Deputy Mayor Tanner, any discussion? Yes?
Is the Fieldhouse Society not able to generate their own tax receipts? Because that's the purpose for doing this, I believe.
No, I don't believe they, they can.
Should they start considering that, given our relationship is sort of coming to an end or has come to an end?
Ironically, I had a meeting with them at, at 3:00 today, so I would suggest that we're not quite there yet.
Okay.
That, yeah, fair enough, so, yeah. We're going to be working with them to, to help promote that facility. And, and all our facilities is really, that's, well, I can tell you, that's what the meeting was about. It was about how do we get more people into that facility, the LCLC? What are the assets we have and how, how can we work together instead of working in silos and saying, I have a meeting room and you have a meeting room, and we should do everything we can to steal the people who use your meeting room from you? So it's having that conversation of working together. So eventually, maybe they'll get to the point where they won't need to have the donations. Ready for the question?
Question?
All those in favor? Motion's carried. Business arising, unfinished business, holiday closure policy. Did someone want to speak to that?
Yeah, during the past Christmas holiday, we, we tried a trial period with closing the town hall between Christmas Day and New Year's and closing the afternoon of December 24th. And this trial period, several years before that, we had looked at the situation, and council had asked us to come back with a draft policy regarding that. Essentially, we're recommending the policy be implemented for two primary reasons. One is that during that week, there's, there's relatively little service provided simply because people are involved, the public's involved in Christmas holidays. It's not an effective use of staff, to have a staff to handle that week. And it's our feeling that we could better utilize staff taking their vacation during Christmas holidays when, when they would like to be with their family and versus taking the holidays during the summer when other times of the year where, where the activity level's much, much higher. So, so that's the objective, objective of, of the policy is to get council to consider approving that policy for the future. Currently, we don't have a policy.
Any questions on that? I see some people thinking. Counsel McDonald?
I say that I'm not a fan and never have been a fan of this, this one at a time of year when a lot of our taxpayers are struggling to make ends meet. They're picking up second jobs and extra hours anywhere they can and not necessarily spending time with their families. But I, I do see that it alleviates a problem with too much vacation time being taken during the summer. We've got a lot of big problems here, so I will support it this year. But I've never been a fan, and you won't make me a fan.
Any other discussion?
I was kind of saying, but I didn't really understand it, but then the explanation of the alleviation of, of the vacation time being taken by more people at one time and having more staff off, it kind of made a little bit more sense to me. Any other?
The other thing I, we did an analysis of other municipal units in Nova Scotia, and a significant majority actually had the same practice and policy in place for the same rationale. You're better off having your staff available when the demand's there from the public versus having less staff other times of the year at, at different points and staffing when you're really not that busy.
Counsel Graves.
My previous private sector employer had the same policy as the one here. So it's, it just makes sense.
Mine currently does as well.
And I think if you went to the private sector and asked a lot of the private sector businesses, you would find that they would also have the same, similar policy.
And it is just a policy, it can be changed if the circumstances change. And if there's a public need, then the policy could be amended again to reflect that. Someone prepared to make a motion?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the holiday closure policy as presented in Document 17-125 and adopted as Policy 5.6 under Hours of Work in the Town, Town's Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual.
Secondar. Counsel Thurman, any further discussion? Question's being called, all those in favor? Motion's carried. RFP for Audit Services. So we gave notice at the last council meeting, notice of motion that this would be rescinded. So just for explanation to the public, the wind-up of the BDA creates some complex accounting issues. Staff are having ongoing discussions with Grant Thornton regarding these issues. And it kind of has come to the realization that if we went out for RFP for Audit Services now and had a new auditor, it would be very complex and time-consuming and expensive for them to get up to speed because we're in the middle of a transition. So it was suggested that we kind of delay... So it was suggested that we kind of delay that for, for a while. So if, we have two motions there, the first is to rescind, if someone would care to make that motion? As it is written in your motion package, Counselor Fugier?
Yes, Your Worship, that Resolution 17-020 approved at the January 23rd, 2017 Town Council meeting, and which reads as follows, be rescinded. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of staff as contained in Document 17-003 and appoint the firm of Grant Thornton as the external auditors for the year ending March 31st, 2017, and further that council direct staff to prepare an RFP for Audit Services in the fall of 2017 for the 2017-18 fiscal year.
So you're seconding that, okay, any discussion? Kind of already knew that one. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion's carried, now you can read the second one, please.
Moving that the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of staff and delay issuing the RFP for Audit Services until the BDA wind-up is complete, anticipated to be the fall of 2018 for the 2018-19 year.
Yep. Secondar, Deputy Mayor Tanner, any discussion on that? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Our last item on the agenda, look at the time, we should just take our time, slow this down. Wastewater Treatment Plant, this might take a while. An aerobic digester upgrades, application for funding under the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund. Mr. Feener, this sounds very exciting. Thank you, Your Worship. Does anyone have any questions on this? I don't know why we don't get presentations on these.
I have a few lines here, do you like to hear them?
Sure.
As you may be aware, this is further to a motion that was made on August 14th to not award the King Street Upgrade Project and allow staff to consult with their funding partners to see if there are other projects that we could submit. We are recommending the following two projects, which includes the anaerobic digester cover replacement that was in the 2018-19 budget, and the belt filter press replacement in the 2019-20 budget. The proposed budget is 1.554 million. Council may recall, the King Street project was just over 2 million prior to funding. We are seeking council support to make application for these other two projects and move King Street.
Any questions on that?
And those projects are on the books in, in coming up years, right?
Correct, the, the cover was in 1819 budget year, and the belt filter press was 1920.
So in, just in regards to the King Street water main project, what are things going to look like going forward? Are we going to reapply for, for funding next year?
It, it will certainly depend on future funding and the focus of those funding projects. But certainly it will be a project for consideration.
So I guess the idea is there's money on the table, we're just going to take it, move it from one, one project to another project, and, and that should be allowed?
Certainly, discussions with, with the funding partners is that we certainly have to make application, but in order to do that, we have to have council support, and they would consider, I'll say substitutions.
Any other questions?
Would you like to have a motion?
Yes, please.
I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and approve the capital budget for the anaerobic digester upgrade in the amount of $1,554,000, subject to a successful application to the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund.
A secondar, please, Counselor Thurman. Any more questions or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
No, it was important, it was just a thank you for, for taking the initiative on that so that we didn't lose a really good funding opportunity.
Awesome. Motion's carried. Yes, thank you, Mr. Feener for that. That's the end of our meeting. I know it's only quarter to seven, you can stick around, just chat if you want, but kind of a motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Tanner, Counselor Fugier.